Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome our stakeholders who are tuning into the audio webcast of this afternoon's FAF Board of Trustees meeting, and also welcome to those of you who are here in Washington, Washington, D.C., observing our meeting today in person. Today's meeting will include reports from the FASB Chairman, the GASB Chairman, the FAF President and CEO, and the FAF Treasurer. We'll also receive reports about the latest activities of the Financial Accounting Standards Advisory Council and the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. And finally, we'll also receive a report from the Co-Chairs of the Board of Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. Before we get into the reports, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank FASB member Mark Siegel for his outstanding service. Mark will be retiring from the FASB after serving 10 years on the board. This was an amazing time to be part of standard setting and as the FASB finalized major standards on revenue recognition, leases, credit losses, and hedging. We also know that there's a special place in Mark's heart dedicated to the FASB's Disclosure Framework Project, which is focused on improving the effectiveness of disclosures in financial statements. Mark helped secure more investor perspectives to the FASB's standard-setting process and was instrumental in helping the FASB and staff communicate with stakeholders in a more plain English manner. Mark's term concludes at the end of June, and we thank him again for his service and look forward to hearing about his next endeavors. I also want to take this opportunity to welcome new FASB member Gary Buser, who will officially join the board on July 1st. Gary has 30 years of experience working in portfolio management, equity research, and accounting analysis, and recently served as a Director and Research Analyst at Lazard Asset Management. At Lazard, he worked as an accounting analyst to improve the firm's global investment professionals' understanding of accounting standards, and his work helped Lazard's investors make better-informed investment decisions. Please join me in welcoming Gary. I also want to acknowledge Harold Monk's departure from the FASB. Harold will be stepping down from the FASB on May 31st. And while Harold could not make it today, please join me in thanking him for his service to the FASB. As I mentioned earlier, today's meeting is being held in Washington, D.C. Each year, the trustees travel to Washington, D.C. for our May quarterly meetings. Here, we meet with members of Congress and their staffs to share with them the work of our standard-setting boards. We also discuss the importance of high-quality accounting standards to the U.S. capital markets. Maintaining strong relationships and an open dialogue with elected and appointed officials is part of our trustees' responsibility to promote and protect the integrity of the standard-setting process. Earlier today, we had good substantive meetings with a number of members of Congress on issues of mutual interest. Our meetings gave them the chance to tell us what they're hearing from their constituents and gave us the chance to provide them with updates on the key activities underway at the FASB, the GASB, and the FAF. Each year, we look forward to this opportunity to meet face-to-face and answer questions. We discuss how the standard-setting boards can better serve investors and other users of financial statements, and we also demonstrate why an independent standard-setting process that engages diverse stakeholder views is critical to developing the highest-quality accounting standards possible. With that, I'd like to move to our regular agenda. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes from our February 27th meeting. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstain? Okay, thank you. I'd like to turn now to the report of the Board of Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee, presented by Co-Chairs Nancy Kopp and Teri Warfield.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start off, as you know, the committee met yesterday, Monday, for a few hours filled with discussion and updating. The Chairs of the FASB and the GASB are going to be updating us all in a minute on their accomplishments in the last quarter, so I don't want to step on their feet. But there was one thing regarding the GASB particularly. Dave Vogt updated us on the discussions the GASB is having with the Native American Finance Officers Association, or as we know it, NFOA, about the application of the standards, the GASB standards, to tribal agencies, as we discussed in the last two meetings, actually, of the board. They have been meeting together. There was an educational session two months ago and a decision to establish a working group with broad participation, both from the GASB, from NFOA, and from other state and local parties. And the board, through our Oversight Committee, is going to be keeping in touch on those developments, following them and getting regular reports. So I look forward to our committee and to the GASB keeping the board updated on those developments as they go through. And Teri, if you want to...
Sure. On the FASB side, Russ Golden on Monday described the process. It's a new process the FASB is following to assess costs incurred to implement new standards. Matter of fact, the board has implemented a number of resources through a website and other materials to be aids in implementation processes with respect to new standards. And what they're trying to do is to assess costs implementing standards, both the transition costs and ongoing costs. And then the second part of that process is then to begin to explore and assess benefits of the new standards probably a few years after the effective date. The final thing that Russ got us up to date on was some outreach that is ongoing with respect to the insurance project, based on some input that they received from some stakeholders. The second area I wanted to talk about was the discussion of the PCC matters. First of all, we discussed the PCC meeting that was held in April. This was the first meeting of the year, so it was the first official meeting for four new PCC members. And that transition process is going well, as reported during the meeting. And Committee members Chuck Allen and Diane Rubin attended the April meeting. I think Diane was going to provide some observations on the meeting.
Thank you, Teri. As you mentioned, Trustee Chuck Allen and I both attended the two-day meeting of the PCC. The PCC noted several town hall events are planned in the future. On June 12th, there will be a town hall at the NATS. That's the National Advanced Accounting Technical Symposium. At that meeting, and there will also be an opportunity for the PCC members attending to meet with the TIC, the Technical Issues Committee. Following that, on June 21st, there will be a PCC town hall meeting in Montana. And then in October, October 26th, the RMA Risk Management Association Conference will be held, and the PCC representatives will be meeting with 12 people discussing accounting matters. And the reason why this is going to be a special meeting is that this is a user group meeting, and we particularly like to have, and the PCC particularly likes to have, stakeholder feedback from the users. During the meeting, there was a good discussion regarding financial performance reporting and disaggregation, and a significant amount of time was spent on share-based compensation, followed by revenue recognition, and specifically, a discussion regarding out-of-pocket expenses, which was an issue raised in a letter from the Technical Issues Committee to FASB recently. They also discussed VIE expansion for private companies, and following that, there was a discussion on cloud computing. Earlier, the PCC had provided comments to the Emerging Issues Task Force for its discussion on cloud computing, and the PCC was very pleased that those comments were incorporated by EITF in its discussion and the end result. I was also particularly interested to see how the group dynamics would change following the departure of the last of the founding PCC members. And while those members were missed, the PCC members filled the gap and had effective and thorough discussions on the issues. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Diane. Related to the PCC matters, Sue Cosper and Russ Golden provided their perspectives to the committee on the April PCC meeting, I think reinforcing a number of things that Diane reported on, as well as progress being made by both the PCC and the FASB on projects related to private company stakeholders. My last item here is we had our twice-a-year meeting with Candy Wright, who is the PCC Chair. And Candy gave us a very good report with respect to how she feels the PCC is working, the engagement of the FASB board members with the PCC, and just generally that the PCC process is working well from her perspective. The one thing she wanted to make note of, first, there has been a conversation percolating up with respect to share-based payment, and they've decided they're going to take a look at that. So that's on their research agenda, and that will be a topic for discussion going forward. And then the last point related to the PCC, and this was a broader discussion than we had in the committee, was the importance of continued promotion of PCC activities and reporting on how the PCC is having an impact on the standard-setting process. I think the cloud computing topic that Diane talked about is a good example of that, where the PCC provided really good input to the EITF discussion and had an impact on the standard setting, at least that's the feedback they got. Well, that's not something we can march out and show, here's a new PCC alternative. But nonetheless, an important activity that the PCC's done, and I think it'll be important that we continue to find the right ways to promote PCC activity and accomplishments so that folks, you know, appreciate and acknowledge the outcomes of the PCC process. Back to you, Co-Chair.
Thank you. Just to fit in with that, one of the other things we do at the committee meeting is report on trustee observations of the groups like PCC, the GAS Act, and the FAS Act, the important advisory committees that constitute a very important part of the whole process. And we're going to hear, and we, the committee proposed to the board, you might recall at our last meeting, that the board itself meet with the Chairs of the Advisory Committees annually. And so we're going to hear from the Chairman of the GAS Act and the FAS Act in just a moment. But there was a meeting in March of the GAS Act that was observed in person by two of our trustees, and I had the pleasure of sitting there, listening on the computer for two days. It's much more fun to be there in person. But I was really very impressed. I do want you to know that the participation of all of the members representing a diversity of views, both preparers and users and academics, was really very significant. And the interaction between the staff and the members of the council, I think, really very significant and very helpful, and part of a total loop that goes to making the standards not only as strong as they can be, but then helps in the implementation through education and through outreach. And similarly, I think Kathy Casey also observed at the FAS Act meeting, and Gary Brubaker, who couldn't be with us today also. So I really do urge the other trustees, even those who are not on the committee, if you have a chance, either in person or indirectly through computer and telephone, to listen and observe and let folks know what is happening, because the more people understand the process itself, the stronger it is. So I just want to thank everybody for participating. Mr. Chairman, if any of our colleagues, Elouise, Kathy, have anything to add. We did have a pretty long discussion at the committee yesterday about it.
The only thing I would add is, in addition to what Nancy said, is I did go on the first day to the orientation session. They had an orientation session for five new GAS Act members and for other members who had joined the council on a mid-year basis. And the orientation session was really a very thorough onboarding process. There was a full discussion of FAF. There was a full discussion of GASB, the standard-setting process, and a full explanation of what their role and responsibilities would be. So I thought for the new people, they walked away at least with some confidence, some understanding of what they were to do. They were given a full briefing book, so they were prepared to hit the ground running.
That's good.
Yeah, Nancy, I'll just reinforce your point about the value of sitting in on these meetings. I very much enjoyed sitting in on the meeting in March. I know we hear from the chairman later in terms of his report, but I thought it was very positive. I thought the dynamic on the committee was very constructive. It was extremely informative, and I know that I learned more about the benefit of having the variety of views around the table from the different stakeholders. It was very useful.
And I think Jeff Esser was also at the GAS Act meeting.
I'm on the phone in the GASB hearing.
Mr. Chairman, that's our report.
Okay. Thank you, Nancy. Any questions for Teri or Nancy? Okay, with that, we're going to turn to Russ Golden and the FASB Chairman's report. Russ?
Thank you, and good afternoon. My formal report is on Master Page 73 of your materials. In Section A, I describe the final documents that the board issued in the first quarter, as well as those that we've issued for public comment. Over the last six weeks, the board has cleared either for public comment or for final issuance a number of documents, including, as Chuck talked about, Mark Siegel's favorite project disclosure framework and the four projects associated with that. We do expect to issue those documents as others throughout the end of the second quarter and into the third quarter. On June 6th, the staff will be presenting to the board all of the final research associated with our 10-year project on improving the accounting for long-duration insurance contracts. And if the board believes they have sufficient information and sufficient research, I will then ask for a final vote, and it most likely will be our final meeting on that project. Beginning on Master Page 74 and into 75, specifically Sections B and C, are the various projects that we've added and the various technical conclusions and discussions we've had regarding implementation, which continues to show the FASB's commitment to serving our stakeholders through the implementation phases of these major projects. On Master Page 80, I talk about the international activities. Throughout the first quarter, a number of us participated in various video conferencing with other standards boards across the world. And Christine and I had the opportunity to go to Japan and attend a multilateral meeting and then a bilateral meeting with our colleagues in the Accounting Standards Board of Japan. We're very much looking forward to a public joint meeting with our colleagues at the International Accounting Standards Board, except for June 18th. All seated board members and Gary will attend that meeting, and we're looking forward to a robust discussion about the implementation activities that we have been conducting, that they have been conducting throughout these joint projects, as well as projects that are aligned between our two agendas. And I'd be happy to report to you the results of that meeting and our August trustees meeting. With that, I'll conclude my prepared remarks and be happy to answer any questions the trustees have.
Okay. Myra, question?
Russ, I understand that there are some changes in the works regarding staffing. Can you tell us a little about this?
Sure. Why don't I let Sue talk about the staffing?
So, thanks, Myra. We have about a third of our resources that are working on implementation activities, and so there's been a bit of a shift from, not only strictly speaking, doing project work, but significant implementation activities. That includes things like technical inquiries. That includes transition resource group meetings and materials. It also includes speeches and educational webinars, so a significant effort there. We have also reduced the number of our fellows, so we've changed a little bit the fellowship program, considering and aligned with our agenda, our active projects in our agenda. And one other great development, actually, is we are adding an academic fellow who starts with us on July the 9th. Under Christine Bodison's leadership, she was able to help us restructure the program and identify a great candidate. I don't know, Christine, do you want to talk about that at all?
I would love to talk about that. So I'm very pleased that we're going to be having Dr. Kurt Guy join us from Stanford University. He just recently completed his dissertation. And he is hired as an assistant professor to begin at Penn State University as soon as he's completed his year with us at the board on staff. And I think he's going to be a really great resource. I think he's going to bring a lot of expertise to bear, and he's, we're just very excited about him, so I think it's going to be a great addition. And I'm very happy that we got this new program off to such a great start, and I have very high hopes for it to continue in this vein.
Other questions for Russ? Chuck?
So, Russ, I want to just follow up on a comment that Teri made about the insurance project that we're working on. When I was preparing for the Oversight Committee meeting, I read a comment letter from a couple of stakeholders, and in there, they referenced a survey that had been done. And was wondering if you'd like to comment on that survey and what we intend to do with that data.
Sure. I did receive that comment letter, and we posted pursuant to our policy. After reading the comment letter, I did invite the representatives of both those organizations to come in and meet with all members of the board, and that took place last week. I found it to be a very, very productive and constructive discussion. And I've also asked the staff to go back and look at some of the outreach that we've done, and I believe that data is approximately 150 users throughout the project, so we can better understand why there may be, or if there is, different data points. And all that will be presented to the board on June 6th. Mark's really been kind of leading our outreach to investors, so if you have anything to add, Mark?
That's the wrong one. You got it. Okay. Sure. Well, you know, you mentioned this is a 10-year project, so it's spanned my entire term. So, brief history. Yeah, you know, I mean, I think the first, we've issued four exposure drafts in this area. Like, the first one was in an invitation to comment in 2007, and frankly, my recollection is that the industry asked us to get involved at that time in this project, particularly since the ISB had been hard at work, working on an insurance update for IFRS. And so the industry wanted us to be at the table when the ISB was working on it. After that, we issued a discussion paper in 2010, another exposure draft in 2013. After that exposure draft, all the feedback that we got was, hey, this joint project is way too broad and had way too much impact on the industry, and we heard that from investors and preparers alike. So we actually completely changed the tune of the project on the basis of the feedback that we got, and went instead to a targeted improvements-type project where we really tried to tackle a smaller number of areas. Targeted improvements means we sort of had a narrower set in mind of objectives. That doesn't mean that there's not going to be an important, significant impact. It just means that we were doing fewer areas. Then we put out another exposure draft in 2016, and so now we're finally getting to the end game of all that feedback. And over those 10 years, I think there were about 450 comment letters, Russ said, 150 individual meetings with users, and I think that that's a conservative number that the staff collects. Hal and I and others have had other meetings that are probably off the books. And, you know, so I think that throughout the project, we've been getting a lot of outreach and sort of navigating our way through it and changing course as a result of some of the feedback that we've gotten over time.
Thank you. Any other questions for Teri, for Russ?
Russ, can you just follow up a little bit more? You had a high level on the meeting with the ISB, but can you give us a little bit more, sing a few more bars on the agenda for that meeting?
Sue's been working with her counterpart, Neely Shaw, who we've known for a number of years about the agenda.
Yeah, so we're planning to talk at length about our project on financial performance reporting, primarily because they have a similar project on their agenda called primary financial statements. So we'll spend a lot of time talking about our respective projects and the overlap. In addition, we'll be talking about segment reporting. They have a great interest in what we're doing with regard to segment reporting in terms of we're looking at aggregation criteria as well as the disclosures, associated disclosures. And in addition, our project, we have a research project on goodwill, subsequent accounting for goodwill. They are also interested in that project, so we will be discussing that project as well. And in addition to that, we have time allotted for implementation efforts with respect to revenue, credit losses, and leases. In addition, just general updates on some of the other projects. So I think it'll be a great meeting.
Any other? John?
Just maybe to follow up with one of the elements on the agenda you talked about, Sue, but Russ. You know, now that revenue recognition is effective for most public companies out there, and given the significance of the efforts around that, can you just talk a little bit about what FASB is doing to monitor how implementation is going here as we get right out of the gate?
Sure. I think the process worked really well, and Jim and Sue deserve a lot of credit for leading our implementation effort, the creation of the TRG, really standing ready to help with questions. I have, and Andy McMaster, he'll probably get to it in his prepared remarks, led a great discussion for the board to understand the types of cost and the current status. We do, we have asked staff to monitor disclosures and monitor any implementation questions, and we do expect that the staff will be ready as the SEC evaluates companies' implementation and has any questions through the comment letter process. And of course, if there are additional things that the board needs to clarify or the board needs to adjust to reduce the cost, we stand ready to help and research any questions that may come in.
Thank you. I'd like to move now to report of the FAS Act Chair, Andy McMaster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My report can be found on Master Page 89 in your materials. Let me just start by observing that in this March meeting was the one where we welcomed nine new council members. We had an orientation session followed by an administrative session. The administrative session had 21 members showing up the day before our full meeting, so I was pretty encouraged by that. The orientation session, I thought, was really quite meaningful. Obviously, it covers what you would think of, the FASB priorities, the mission, the role of FAS Act, its structure. And those are primarily conducted by Russ and Sue, and it really gives a good baseline for the new members. We also had a very good session in the orientation from Kevin Vaughn from the SEC, which I thought was important because it showed the balance and the importance of the relationship between the different bodies. So that went well. The administrative session was fairly straightforward. We have this every year. We talk about what were the topics that we addressed in the prior year, what is on the agenda for FASB, and how that relates to our forward-looking agenda, and with a lot of discussion around what that agenda is going to look like. The meeting the next day focused in two areas. The first one, probably not surprising to you, was tax reform and income tax accounting. And it was, from my perspective, very encouraging. You know, companies were clearly challenged by the date of implementation or the date of effectiveness for that legislation. But they were very complimentary of both the FASB and the SEC in terms of their swift reaction and guidance that they provided, FASB in the form of Q and As, SEC in the form of an SAB, which really helped facilitate preparers being able to respond in a very, very short period of time. So that was positive. The members did encourage the board to continue to follow up on two of the tax provisions that are a little bit more complicated, and quite frankly, most companies did not resolve them at that point in time, BEAT and what they call guilty. You've got to love the acronyms. We did talk about the FASB's revisiting and refreshing the disclosure review project on income taxes, and they were very supportive of that. There's one area, though, that was mixed reviews, and that's discussion on backwards tracing, a little bit more complicated, but it's one that we'll probably, it's a research project that the board has, and we'll probably come back and talk about that again. The second topic, as Russ alluded to and you've heard a little bit about, was implementation of revenue recognition. Our objective here was really to focus on the initial costs and initial benefits, recognizing it was very early on. But we wanted to get a quick snapshot at that point in time. Obviously, given the status, the investors didn't weigh in too much because they really hadn't seen disclosures at that point in time. But from the perspective of practitioners, they said costs were somewhat higher than they had initially expected. However, from a personal perspective and from what some of the other members observed to me, I was actually surprised that they weren't higher. I thought the costs actually turned out to be lower than I that they weren't higher. I thought the costs actually turned out to be lower than I expected for the major preparers that are part of that. Now, just one person's perspective, but there were a couple of others that felt the same way. Some of the benefits that they recognized, and this, I think, is quite positive, is that the adoption of the standard is only going to require, in many cases, minimal changes to how they negotiate contracts, which was a great concern to them early on, that it could really affect the business. And from that perspective, it hasn't. And it's increased both the efficiency and the centralized record-keeping for contract information, something that you can imagine was not all that strong in the past. As I said before, disclosure from an investor perspective is preliminary, but we will be revisiting this later, and I think that's important. They also commented that they think the recurring costs are likely going to be substantially less than the initial costs. You would hope that that is the case. Our next meeting is going to be on Friday, June 8th. We have two topics identified. Interestingly, they align pretty closely with the discussion that the ISB is going to have, or the Board's going to have with the ISB. One is the disaggregation of performance information, and the second is taking a look at the Board's research project on goodwill. So, I'll stop there and respond to any questions.
Questions for Andy? Kathy?
Andy, again, I had the pleasure of sitting in on the meeting, and I very much enjoyed it. Very much enjoyed it. With respect to the assessment of costs and benefits, you mentioned that this was sort of the initial effort to do that, and that this might be the first in a series of future discussions on cost and benefits of the implementation of the revenue recognition standard. I wondered if you could mention what you think that means, and also how you might also be looking at these cost and benefits of other standards, and how that will help the FASB?
That's a great question. I think it's fair to say that FASAC believes, and you've heard the importance of implementation monitoring on the part of the FASB, we think of FASAC as being another arm to assist the Board in doing that, given the fact that we have a lot of different stakeholders that attend these meetings. So, you know, we did identify early on, and it was early on, to take a look at REVREC. And I think we got some important and meaningful input back that hopefully will assist the Board in understanding it. We're going to come back at the end of this year. And that may still be a little bit early, but take a look at, a closer look at the ongoing costs, and what are some of the ongoing benefits, and provide, you know, preparers, auditors, investors, the opportunity to comment on that. But, you know, this is a high priority for both the Board and for FASAC. And, you know, quite frankly, it's an approach we intend to use with the other standards that will be implemented, you know, in both leases and CECL in all likelihood. In fact, for leases, we're going to look at that. I believe we've got it scheduled for December 2019 to do that initial look for leases as well.
Okay. Any other questions for Andy? Andy, thank you. All right. We'd like to turn to the GASB Chair Report. Dave Vought?
Yes. My report starts on page 93 of your packet, and I'll highlight just a few items from there, and then turn it over to questions. But you'll see in item 1A that one final pronouncement was issued. We issued a standard on certain disclosures related to debt, including direct borrowings and direct placements. And I will tell you that this topic actually came through our Advisory Council, the GASSAC, and specifically, the representatives in the user community. So, we were able to respond to that. Second, I would point out is that we did clear a document for public comment, which was an invitation to comment on revenue and expense recognition. I will tell you that it's presenting two potential models for the GASB to consider, one that's similar to what we're doing today, exchange and non-exchange, and the other one is performance obligation, no performance obligation, similar to what our sister board, the FASB, did on revenue recognition. So, just looking for input from our stakeholders on those two different approaches. I would, we didn't have any changes during the quarter in our agenda, but I did point out in item 1C there that we did in April at our Board meeting add two projects to the current technical agenda, one on public-private partnerships, and the other one on cloud computing arrangements. And both of these projects will involve financial information that is clearly within the scope, Group 1, of the GASB scope of authority. So, the other thing I would point out is that we continue to work on significant decisions related to the financial reporting model reexamination. We're working towards the goal of issuing a preliminary views in the third quarter of this year. And that will prove interesting because the ITC, as you know, got a lot of different varying feedback. And now, the Board will be taking a preliminary view, so it'll be interesting to get our stakeholder viewpoints on where the Board is tentatively headed on that particular project. On page 94, I would just point out on the international scene, that myself and some of the GASB team met with the International Public Sector Accounting Standards Board when they had their meeting in New York City in March, so we were able to participate with their Board and interact with them. On page 95, I would just point out that in addition to the two projects that we added to our current technical agenda, we did add one topic on research related to deferred compensation plans. So, we'll be doing, starting some research on that. And that's primarily because the two projects that we moved to, the technical plan, came from the pre-agenda research when the research was completed. So, the last thing I would simply point out to you is on the last page of my report, which is on page 99, and just point out that we continue to monitor the implementation on the pension standards, gathering the data currently on how that implementation is going, which will be very beneficial when it comes to the post-implementation review of those standards. So, with that, Chairman, I'll turn it back to you for any questions.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions for Dave?
Dave, thanks for the report. Got a question for either you or Jeff. As you continue this push for making the financial statements high readability, usability, and I applaud that, I noticed that you mentioned in the report, under the strategic section, you've got an analyst guide to government financial statements. I'm wondering if you could just talk a little bit more about that. Who are you targeting with that guide, and how are you hoping to help to service your constituents with that?
I'll have Jeff, our GASB Vice Chair, answer that question, since he brings the perspective of the user to the table.
Sure. Well, we updated, actually, our most basic user guide recently, and that's the one designed for citizens and legislative groups and oversight bodies. And then, more recent to that, we updated the analyst guide, which, from my background as an analyst, is a pretty useful thing, and that's one step up in complexity. And I sort of see these guides sort of playing three functions, particularly the analyst guide. One is it's a link between governmental accounting and governmental analysis. Most analysts are not accountants. And so, to have governmental accounting in a language they understand, I think is very, very useful to them. And now, seeing as I've been in both seats, I see that linkage quite clearly. Second is, with the advent of automation, more and more analysts are not necessarily digging into the financial statements themselves, but are having financial statement information given to them. And so, guides such as this, I think, are helpful to have analysts oversee that collection of data. And finally is, and I've seen this in some of my outreach, the value for junior analysts. You know, the shortage of governmental accounting expertise that exists within governments, and also auditors, is also in the analytic community. So, guides such as this really help bridge that gap over to knowledge about governmental accounting and GASB standards.
One follow-on question. And you'll be updating this at what frequency?
We generally, this is the third edition, so generally every two, three years, and really, I think, based on major standards coming out. So, this one picked up pensions and OPEB, so that's pretty significant changes, therefore warranting an updated analyst guide.
Jeff?
Yes. Dave, you mentioned in your written report a number of speeches and presentations that you've made during the reporting period. Can you kind of tell us why those are important, and how they affect your stakeholder outreach?
No, definitely speeches and stuff are very, very important. Dave Bean helps coordinate a lot of it. He and I do a lot of the presentations, but a lot of our team does, too, so I'll have David come in a little bit on that.
Jeff, you talked about outreach efforts, and really, speeches are a key part of the outreach efforts in fulfilling our mission, the education portion of our mission. I think it's really beneficial for our stakeholders to hear it from the horse's mouth, you know, to actually hear it from the standard setters who have been through the wars of developing the standards, because people not only want to know the what, but they also want to know the whys. It also gives us an opportunity to get direct feedback from our stakeholders. There are many issues that have come up over the years where we've picked up through conversations, either Q and As during the presentations. It could be even informal conversations, for example, you know, during a break or at a mill, where somebody will raise an issue, it will spark, you know, say, this has broader implications, and we'll bring that to our Advisory Council, talk to them. And in many cases, it has resulted in a practice issue project and a final standard. Then, I think the final thing is, it helps humanize the Board. You know, they think we're...
We're Martians.
Yes. They think we're some authoritarian body that doesn't care. And by seeing us in the flesh and being able to interact with us, they find out that we've actually walked a mile in their shoes, either as a preparer, or a monitor, or a user of financial statements. And I think that helps tremendously in, you know, the Board, in our outreach efforts, and making sure that we're inclusive in the feedback that we get. And they feel like we're more approachable because of those presentations. So, it takes a lot of time, but I think it's well worth our efforts.
It's interesting, Jeff, as I mentioned, you attending the Government Finance Officers Association Annual Conference, I was able to sit in on some sessions. And it was always interesting, if somebody sat down that meeting, they said, oh, no, that's the GASB. And that, you know, like we were something different. And so, it's nice to be able to have those informal conversations with people to get their feedback and stuff. It's a really good way to learn things and to build relationships with people.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dave or Dave?
But first, I would just indicate that I went to one of the sessions where David was the speaker, and I told him I'd come in the tent. I thought I was going to walk into a room of about 15 people. I walked into a room of about 1,000 people.
Twenty-five hundred, yeah.
But my question, David, is you indicated that you had recently issued an invitation to comment on the revenue and expense recognition model. Can you just share with us some of the education, some of the outreach efforts that surrounded that whole invitation to comment?
Yeah. This being a little bit higher-level type document, we wanted to make sure that people understood and gave us feedback, because always, in this first stage of due process, the more input we get, the more that it can impact where we're headed. So, we did do a plain-language document about the ITC, so people could get a better perspective of what it was about. We've actually put together a five-series short video where I participated, and team members participated, talking about the invitation to comment. We received about 55 comment letters. Always would like more, but it was still a pretty good response rate for this type of document. We also held a webinar to actually cover the invitation to comment, so people didn't feel like they had to pick it up and start on their own. And we actually had over 900 participants on that webinar and stuff. In addition, we've been doing public hearings. We completed two of those public hearings so far. The first one was in St. Louis in conjunction with the Government Finance Officers Association Annual Conference. Last week, we just did one in San Francisco, and we have one more scheduled in Norwalk next week in conjunction with our annual meeting. So, a lot of outreach, a lot of trying to get people to understand, and the more feedback we get is the better. So, we're pleased with the way it's proceeding so far.
Okay. Any other questions for Dave? Okay. Thank you, Dave. I'd like to move now to Robert Scott and the reporter, the GASSAC Chair. Robert?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My written report starts on Master, page 102 of your packet. As indicated before, or earlier, the GASSAC did meet March 5th and 6th in Norwalk. We welcomed five new members to the Council at that meeting, and we were also fortunate to have in person Trustee Foster and FAF CEO Terry Polley join us. As Trustee Foster noted, we did have a comprehensive orientation session for the five new members, plus those who were appointed by the trustees during 2017 to fill terms. That orientation included not only, included Terry on behalf of the FAF, but the Davs, myself, and then the GASB staff, a full morning of orientation for the new members. The Council provided at the March meeting feedback to the Board on several technical agenda items, which are noted in the report. I'll highlight three of them in particular. The first was on the financial reporting model. We provided feedback specifically on the Board's tentative decisions relative to the proposed recognition approach for governmental funds, and the short-term financial resources approach, which is expected to be included in the next due process document, which will be a preliminary views document to be released by the Board. The second item that I wanted to highlight was feedback on the implementation guides that are being prepared relative to fiduciary activities and the leases project. These are two very important standards that governments will have to prepare to implement over the next two years. And I think it was very important at this stage of the game for the Council members to provide feedback on the topics that the staff has accumulated, as well as suggesting additional potential questions that could be raised in the implementation guides for preparers to ponder as they prepare to implement those standards. And then, the third item that I wanted to highlight that we, the Council, provided input on was the final stages of the debt disclosures, including direct borrowing, that then has since been issued as Statement Number 88. But it was good that we had that last kick at the cat at that on something that is very important in terms of providing enhanced disclosure for the financial markets in terms of debt disclosures, given the feedback that particularly our user members of the Council, as well as other users, have provided to the Council and the Board. The other thing, the other significant activity that occurred besides just commenting on various technical agenda issues was the annual project prioritization, where there were 48 potential projects. It's about a 100-page report that the staff prepares for the Council to review in terms of potential projects or pre-agenda research that the Board may want to undertake. And so, we were able to go through that exercise in good order. And I'm hoping, I trust, that the feedback we provided to the Board and the staff will be valuable as we move forward. From an administrative standpoint, the Executive Committee of the Council began the process, or agreed to begin the process of developing a proposal to update our rules of procedure, which are getting very dusty on top. And I think the binder on them is probably coming off the cover of the book. But we'll discuss in July at the Executive Committee, and then move on to the full Council, and then eventually the Oversight Committee and the full Board. As Trustee Cop suggested, we do have our upcoming meeting in July in New York City. And again, we would encourage any of your participation as your schedules may permit, and we welcome and be glad to see you there and observe our discussions, as I think we do have a good discussion, as Nancy indicates and is emphasized. And we'd appreciate your participation. And, Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Okay. Questions for Robert?
I have one.
Please.
Brief question. You mentioned in the last bullet the prioritization of projects, of GASB projects that the Council undertakes. Could you just touch briefly on the process and then the results?
Certainly. As indicated, the staff prepares a report of various items that could be prepared, including reexamination of previously issued standards, other items or other topics that have come to the staff or the Board's attention, or have come up through conversations from Council members. And so, there were a total of 48 items. The process is basically there's a forced ranking that the Council members make choices in terms of what are high and medium priorities. It's not a vote. It's more of a preference ranking process. And as a result of that, there were actually six items. We had a tie for number five. But not surprisingly, they also dovetail with where the Board's going, because the top six items were note disclosures, going concern, information technology, including cloud computing, public-private partnerships, capital assets, and deferred compensation plans. And all of those, other than the capital assets topic, you'll note in Chairman Vought's report, are either on the pre-agenda research list, or they've been added to the technical agenda. So, I think that that's illustrative of how the Board is listening to its Advisory Council and putting items on its agenda. And we appreciate that they are listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Robert. Let's turn to the FAF President/CEO Report. Terry?
Thank you, Chuck. Just a couple of things to mention. One, on the 2018 FAF budget, I wanted to just mention that on April 9th, the SEC completed its review of the FASB Accounting Support Fee and posted... its review of the FASB accounting support fee and posted their order regarding review of that fee for 2018. They reviewed it under Section 109 of Sarbanes-Oxley to ensure that the accounting support fee has been calculated in accordance with that law. Shortly thereafter, the PCAOB and FINRA, who are our agents for the FASB and GASB accounting support fees respectively, started the assessment and collection process for those accounting support fees. Just want to mention that information about how we're funded is available on the website, including a video that we had issued in January. And also, for interested stakeholders, a summary copy of our budget is also available on our website. I mentioned last quarter that we completed an assessment of our publishing technology, which confirmed the critical need for us to update our publishing systems and some of our business processes. In the interim, we have been diving in and doing a little bit of homework to try to further refine what it is we're going to need to do. We are in the process of talking with various vendors and expect to refine a project budget and a timeline and come back to the Board of Trustees for approval of that project. And similar to the Technology Transformation Project that we completed last year, we're expecting this to also be a multi-year project, but more to come on that. Later today, we should be issuing the FAF 2017 Annual Report. We actually completed the audit, I think, early in March and posted the financial statements to our website, but this will be the beautiful glossy report that will be available. The theme of it is standards that work, and it talks about the efforts that the FASB and the GASB take to ensure that standards work for everyone, including the role that our stakeholders have in that process. There are a number of graphics in the hard copy report, but I would encourage people to access the online version because there are a few enhanced features there and a couple of videos that elaborate further on that theme. Finally, I just would like to say that the D.C. meeting is always a more challenging one to plan and execute with the stakeholder dinner and the Hill visit. So I just wanted to express thanks to Matt Broder and his team, especially Todd Cranford and Sherry Thomas, for all the efforts that went into planning and executing these last three days of meetings. Thanks to you guys. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Terry. Any questions for Terry? All right. Let's turn to the report of the FAF Treasurer, Chris.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We did make one accounting change in our financial reports, starting with the first quarter of this year, and that is to book all of the accounting support fees in the first quarter rather than breaking them out over the four quarters. So just keep that in the back of your mind as I give you some of these numbers. The total revenue booked in the first quarter was $40.9 million. That's because of the full accounting support fees being in there. If I had to, you know, do a guesstimate, I think we're running just modestly higher than last year on both publications and on accounting support fees, which are, you know, really, the accounting support fees are the bulk of our revenues. Second, our total expense is $11.6 million in the first quarter, and that reflects, you know, favorably against the budget. That's the result, mainly of timing, not an expectation that we won't be spending those funds, but there are people who have been hired but won't start until this quarter. And we have a relocation that was expected in the first quarter but will actually be made in the second quarter, and those account for most of the change. On the investment account, if you recall, the first quarter was a rough one for markets just generally, and so we essentially earned nothing in the first quarter as things declined in value, and that put us well below our budget. Nonetheless, as we look overall at expense and revenue and investment, we are running a little ahead of our budget. And so as a result, our net assets are increased by 29.2. Again, a huge part of that is the accounting support fee, but nonetheless, above what we expected on the budget. Staffing for the three organizations, FAF, FASB, and GASB, is running about five down. Again, that is from budget. That's, again, reflecting the people who have not yet quite joined us. And that really concludes my report.
Thanks, Chris. Any questions on the financial report? Okay. Before we close, I would be remiss if we didn't really properly recognize Mark Siegel and his contributions to the organization. So Mark and the committee, and the committees and the board trustees, please join me in wishing Mark well and thanking him again for tremendous dedication. Okay. This concludes the public session of the FAF Board of Trustees meeting. I want to thank those of you who have participated in the meeting, those who've tuned in to the audio webcast, or those who observed the meeting here in person. I'd like to close with a reminder that the next FAF Board of Trustees meeting will be held on Tuesday, August 21st, in New York City. Thanks very much.